Okay, welcome everyone to the Sioux Falls Board Candidate Forum. It's sponsored this evening by the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters. My name is Jeff Griffin. I'm the president of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, started here in January. And just as a reminder, the Chamber and the League of Women Voters host these state and local events with candidates because obviously it's very important for our business community, our entire community, to be informed about these important decisions you guys are making. We are tonight at the Instruction Planning Center without a live audience. We're being broadcast live on Midco, Channel 20 and 595, and the event will be rebroadcast live several times until the election. We're also live streaming and recorded on the school district's YouTube channel. I also just wanted to mention, school board is a very, I mean, all important elected positions, correct? But I know my family just relocated here. We next year will have a son at the Career and Technical Education Academy and a daughter at Washington High School. And when you learn of a community that passes a bond referendum with 80% in favor, and you see the scores that come out of Sioux Falls School District, this is a neighborhood safety issue, it's a neighborhood development issue, it's a business recruitment and retention issue. So, very, very, very important. Also, I always admire anyone that has the guts to put their name on a ballot because the, most of the time people serve in office, everyone out there is an expert, right? And this is the time to step forward and put your name on the ballot, and that's what these ladies here tonight who you're going to meet. So, to both of you, congratulations for having the courage to be leaders in our community. So, a few reminders for Election Day. Election Day is, will be held on Tuesday, June 2. Voters are encouraged to vote absentee by mail. If interested in absentee voting, please go to sdsos.gov to find an absentee ballot application. You must submit an original signed application along with your photo, along with a copy of a photo identification or a notarized signature to your county auditor as soon as possible. In-person voting will continue to be conducted at various precincts throughout the city of Sioux Falls. Polling centers will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. For specific precinct locations, you may visit the city of Sioux Falls website, www.soufals.org/election. And now, it is my honor to introduce Melanie Bliss, who will be our moderator for tonight, and Melanie is representing the League of Women Voters. So Melanie, the show is yours.
Thank you very much. This year's election features two candidates vying for one seat. Cynthia Mickelson and Sarah Stocky are your 2020 school board candidates. This is Cynthia Mickelson, to my right, to your left on your screen, and Sarah Stocky on the left. The format for tonight's forum is as follows. Each candidate will have three minutes for introductions.
After introductions, we will transition to the question and answer portion of the event, and each candidate will have the opportunity to respond to each question, and will have 90 seconds for that response. There will be no rebuttal time. At the end of tonight's forum, there will be three minutes for closing comments. The introductory comments will follow alphabetical order according to last name. Therefore, we will begin with Cynthia Mickelson. Cynthia, you have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to the Chamber, to the League of Women Voters, and to Melanie for providing this event. I wholeheartedly agree with what Jeff said in that the school board election is very important. And it's unfortunate, my first time being elected, it was only a school board election, and the turnout was like 3%. And so, I'm excited to see the number of absentee ballots that have been going out and being returned because I'm hopeful that we'll have a better turnout on the school board election as well because it is such an important part of our community. I have just finishing my third year on the school board, my first term. I'm the current president of the school board. Last year, I was the vice president of the school board. And after deeply considering serving again and talking to my family and to my friends, I wholeheartedly decided to run again. I'm very excited about this position. It takes a lot of time and effort, but it's well worth it. Our children and our community are the foundation, and it's our future. And I am so fortunate to have been part of the team here at the district, and I look forward to continuing on with our plans and with our new superintendent that will be starting July 1. We need to be prepared in this upcoming year to have some tough conversations based upon budget and other things because of the change and what's affected us as a community with COVID-19. And I think the school district has been a shining example of how we had to pivot and change course when we were faced with these decisions. Our school board and our district staff worked tirelessly to make those changes and to provide resources to our families and to our students during this time. And we did it successfully. In fact, if you looked at kind of our COVID page, if you looked at the state one, they basically cut and paste exactly what we were doing because what we were doing was so successful in reaching out to our students who didn't have the resources or didn't have even the internet, we reached out to them to get those things. My husband and I have three sons. Mark is my husband, and we've been in Sioux Falls now for 24 years. Our oldest is George, 21, David, 19, and Charlie is 16. They all attended Sioux Falls Public Schools and had a great foundation. Charlie's still in the schools, he's a sophomore, or just finished today his sophomore year at Lincoln High School. Sioux Falls will continue to be a successful community as long as our public school system continues to excel with students and families from all walks of life. The diversity of our schools is a positive experience for all of our students and families so that we may learn to live outside our traditional bubble. Thank you, and I look forward to answering the questions this evening.
Good. Thank you very much. Sarah, you're next, three minutes.
Hello. I am Sarah Stocky. Wondering why I'm running. I think being a parent is probably my biggest reason for running. I have four children. My oldest is an eighth grader. I have a sixth grader. I have a preschooler, and I have a one-year-old. And I'm also an educator. I am a professor of nursing at USD. I'm a registered nurse, and so, education is my passion. Students are my passion, and any student I've ever had. I used to teach at CTE Academy as part of the Sioux Falls School District. Every one of my students can tell you I have a passion for teaching, I have a passion for education, but I also have a passion for my students, every student, and hoping that every one of them succeed in whatever path they choose. And our goal in education really needs to be our students and meeting them where they're at and helping them on their role. And that's why I'm running for school board. I just see this need. Sioux Falls School District is amazing. We have so many amazing gifts and talents. We have amazing teachers. We have amazing counselors and staff and administrators, and I want to help lift all of them up and challenge them with all of the new changes that we've had. They have definitely rose to the occasion. We have, I was, I was teaching remotely as well, so I totally understand that. And also teaching my sixth grader and my eighth grader as well the last two months. And so, I understand all that they've gone through as well, but being able, seeing everybody rise to the challenge has been wonderful. One of the, some of the other things is I have a psychology degree, and my nursing degree helped me to see things from many different perspectives. I am a very good team worker. I am always willing to rise to a challenge and see things for more than just the one avenue that sometimes is presented. Evidence-based research is huge. I'm always willing to look up research and dig to the bottom of anything to help before I start making any decisions. I've been a Sioux Falls resident for over 15 years. I am very mindful of spending. I'm a very good budget person. I'm very good at listening. I've done that for years as a nurse and as an educator. Students, students are really the biggest reason to, I'm here to be their voice, their advocate. I've done it for every student all along, and I think in the Sioux Falls School District, we have a lot of room for growth. We always do. Greatness only comes from change. Improvement only comes from change, and we want to raise successful young adults on their path, whatever that path may be, and that's what I'm hoping to do. So, I'd really appreciate your vote. And thank you very much to the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for having us here today.
Thank you very much. We're now ready to begin with our questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question, and the order of response will be rotated between the candidates. We will begin with Cynthia Mickelson. Let us start off with the broad question. What do you believe is the biggest challenge facing the school district in the immediate future, and how do you plan to address it?
Our biggest issue will probably be budget. We have heard from the governor that, you know, the sales tax receipts and so forth are dramatically down. I just was on a chamber call, and same news from the city. So, you know, we are a publicly funded institution. So, how do we handle that change, and what conversations do we have? The budget is always burdensome thing. When I first ran for school board, I met with Todd Beek, the business manager, to make sure I understood education funding. My husband at the time was in the state legislature, so I met with him to get another handle on it. It's not an easy, there's many legislators that don't even understand legislative funding. So, I understand that principle and how we are going to do that. I'm very detail-oriented into that. I've been working on the budget for now three years, and going forward, that's going to be hard. But I also know I have helped raise money outside public funds, private funding. Through my work with Steve Hildebrandt at Promising Futures Fund, we raised $600,000 for SIPs education for our Title I schools, for reading. And that's a big number, and that's something outside the box that hasn't been done inside the Sioux Falls School District. Thank you.
Sarah?
I believe that our biggest challenge is communication. I think that we have a lot of room for growth in communication. We're starting to use things like apps and texting and phone calls and emails, but we also have to be respectful of the email overload, the phone call overload, the lack of internet access for some of our students. And how do we communicate with those parents that work two jobs? And how do we raise those expectations that they have to do more at home? How can we be their support system? And so, I think communication is a really big part. And there's lots of different avenues we can go at communication, but I think one of the biggest things that, before we can broach a subject, is we need to get feedback. I need to get feedback from the parents and the students. What works the best? What isn't working? How do they prefer to be communicated with? What do they want to be communicated with? Where do they feel the lack is? I think that's some of the biggest things before you can move forward and address anything. I think we need to figure out where all the empty spots are.
Thank you. We'll start with Sarah on this one. As a board member, what type of relationship do you plan to have with parents, community members, and other elected officials?
I'm a big relationship person. I believe that the only way to get anything done is through a solid team, and parents are a huge part of that team. Legislators are a huge part of that team. The members of the school board, members of the administration, teachers, counselors, every part of the staff are extremely important in that team. And I'm very much a people person, so I'm always out, I'd be very willing to, I'm probably going to be the person that's at every building, asking everybody what they need, what their views are on everything. But I always want everybody's feedback, and I'm really a big people person, and I know that the only way to get anything done is to work together. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Thank you. Great question. Relationship is the key. I always try to extend that to everyone I meet. I even, when I found out Sarah was running and found out her name, I reached out to her to let her know if there was anything I could help her, if she had any questions regarding how to even campaign-election-type stuff. Because this is, if you have two good candidates, it's a better choice for the public. And I wanted to make sure she had the tools to do that. So, as you can see, I rose up quickly as president of the school board in my three years of service, and I think that's because the relationships I developed quite quickly with the other members. Even there were several members with more extended time serving. They saw that I, A, wanted to serve in this position, and B, had the ability to do that. It's important to communicate with everybody at the administrative level as well as the ground level. So, in addition to meeting with Dr. Maher and the leadership team, I'm a mentor in, at Hawthorne, and I volunteer every day at our EIC school, which is our elementary immersion center school, because it's important for me to set an example and be there so that they know who I am. And if they want to reach out to me with questions, I can get them in the right direction. And then, parents, of course. I have my personal cellphone on the district website. I always take questions. I always answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The third question, starting with you, this is how it will go the rest of the time. If elected, what are some specific innovative actions that you plan to recommend that, in your mind, would improve our school system or our public schools? And how would you go about achieving them?
Great question. So, our guiding principle of the school district is our strategic plan, and it's our roadmap. But it's about time, it's been five years since we implemented that, so it's time to reevaluate that and look at what have we reached and what maybe do we still need to reach, and do we need to fine-tune some areas and maybe change some directions on that. And it's almost perfect timing with the new superintendent coming in too, because I'm sure she's going to have new ideas and so forth that go that. But as far as for me, what I see happening is we still need to meet our reading scores, and so, SIPs, I talked about that earlier. I would like to see that implemented district-wide as well as not just in first and second grade, all through the elementary years so that we all know if you cannot read, it's going to hold you back from everything. So, how can we do that? So, it's going to be through funding, and we're probably going to have to look at some private funding to help continue on that. Some other things I'd like to look at, at our new high school, is block scheduling. It's near CTE, it's near the University Center, or not, the Community College of Sioux Falls, and it's near CTE, and they're on block scheduling already. And New Tech High is joining them. So, maybe that's a perfect time for them to look at this new high school having block scheduling.
If elected, some of my first innovative actions, I think one of the big ones, I had also listed CTE, not just the fact that I had taught there, but I think it's underutilized. Our goal is to teach our students or encourage them to find their passion, and not everybody's path looks the same. And CTE is just phenomenal. It is, like I said, underutilized. But wondering about, is there a way, instead of having a separate CTE middle school program, engaging the students to actually go out from middle school, maybe one week each different program, and get taught by the actual CTE students that are at CTE? A way for the students to give back that are already out there, but also to engage in that passion. Because I know right now, at the CTE level, my daughter just got through middle school, and she can honestly tell me, because she went out to my program at CTE, and she goes, "This is so much different." If I would have known CTE was like this, I would have loved it a lot more. And so, how can we build it and how can we grow it? That's one of them. The other thing is remote learning. I think this COVID experience has really taught us a value in remote learning, whether it be for snow days, instead of having to build them up at the end of the year, we go to a remote learning instead of having to call things at 6:00 in the morning to stop class. We can call it at 10:00 safely at night, allowing parents to find daycare for their children, but also to switch to a remote learning environment. I think there's a lot of growth there as well. So, thank you.
The next question is, the school board is expected to approve new school boundaries on June 22. This is obviously an important and emotional issue for many families in and around the Sioux Falls area. When considering options for school board boundaries, which would you look at most closely? Sarah, sorry. I looked at you.
Yeah, I know. I was like, I think it's her. That's okay. So, I listened to all of the call-in sessions for the boundaries, and I think there was a lot of really good feedback, a lot of really good ideas. And I also looked at, what do they all offer? And I know that people are afraid of change. Change is always scary, change is new, but I think too that we're all changing together, so it's kind of a good challenge for all of us to have. The boundaries that, as I looked at, I think they both offer a lot of really great opportunities, both for the middle school and the high school. And they both offer some interesting challenges. And some of them, like even the hearing about the Challenge Center. My daughter went to the Challenge Center. She also went to honors program at Edison, so I heard a lot of those discussions as well. And what does that look like? But does it offer more growth in our programs as well? Can we offer the Challenge Center at multiple sites rather than just one? Can we offer honors program at multiple sites? So, with the boundaries, yes, there come some big challenges. And even when they talk about the equal opportunities, some places have banned, more ban programs, some have more music programs. And can we make that more equal across the board? And then, they were concerned about teachers as well. Can we spread the wealth of new and experienced teachers across all of those sites so that one isn't more than the other? So, I think there's a lot of challenges, but also a lot of excitement for change. So, thank you.
Cynthia? Great question. So, when we first convened the task force, I gave them five guiding principles of what we wanted them to take into consideration for the boundaries in their discussion, and that still carries through today. And it encompasses safety, it encompasses equality and equity, it encompasses geographic location. And those are all the things that are still important, but we also need to look at it as fair. I heard several comments of people like, "Well, I live, you know, a mile from here, but will be three miles from there." So, we as the board, unfortunately, and fortunately, need to look at where 24,000 students live. So, we have to look at what the average distance from people will live and change that, not just the one individual. So, when we do that, we have to do that with fairness in mind. We have to do that to make sure that we're providing equal opportunity for everyone, and that's what I would most want to focus on. Whether programming gets changed, that is going to get into the board discussions. It really wasn't addressed much with the task force and with the community input, but at our first work session, which will be June 3, we are going to start discussing those matters. And I'm not just, at the phone call in community ones, it was all about Spanish immersion and honor, but we have several other programs as well that need to also be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Very good. This will stay on the same topic of school boundaries. Are you in favor of grandfathering students if they start the next school year at one campus and the new boundaries place them at a different school by fall of 2021? If so, what would your criteria be for grandfathering in students?
Great question. So, can I give it in both levels too? Because for me, there's a different answer for between high school and middle school. Thank you.
And I've got another comment about it.
Yeah. So, I didn't, maybe you have another question on middle school, or should I address it all? Okay, thank you. So, high school, seniors to me is a no-brainer. Seniors, they have to finish where they start. That's just not even, so where it gets murky is anything below that, because then the next question is if we do, when and if we do seniors, are there tag-alongs? So, I have asked, and I've not received yet, so I have not made a final determination. So, what I'm going to give you is the answer, what information I will be taking into consideration. We need to know the numbers of tag-alongs for seniors, and we need to know the numbers, if then we decide to go down to juniors, we need to know the same question, if we're going to let sibling tag-alongs, because, you know, transportation's a problem. High school, we don't bus, you have to carpool or get there yourselves. So, that's something, those are the other numbers we needed to take into consideration through the sophomore year. As far as middle school, that becomes harder because I see both sides right now. If you're an eighth grader, you want to finish where you are. However, if you're going to the eighth grade at your new building, you're going to be more apt to be going to high school than with that same group of people. So, I need, I've asked for those numbers as well before I make my final determination. And since I haven't seen those numbers, I can't truthfully answer that. But that's the information I'm going to use to make my determination. Thank you.
Good. Sarah?
I completely agree. I completely agree. Seniors, definitely, it's your last year, letting you finish out where you started. But I think too, like figuring out why. Why is it that they want to stay? Is it because it's closer to home? Is it because they're with friends? What, is it a specific activity that they've been in, you know, with the same coach? What is it that's making them want? I think that's a, a big factor into versus, I just want to stay because I want to stay. So I think a lot of that has to, to play in. And then, yes, figuring out how many need to be grandfathered in and how much room do we even have? And then talking about their younger siblings, maybe not grandfathering them in, but if there's availability for open enrollment, opening that up to those, first serve to those, those younger siblings. But I definitely agree, as, as seniors, you kind of want to finish it out where you've been for the last three years. So definitely, thank you.
Good enough. The next question, we'll start with Sarah. What challenges do you anticipate the district will face when schools are able to open following the COVID-19 pandemic? How do you plan to address these issues? Will the school board decide?
I'm sure there's going to be a lot of challenges, working as, at USD, where we're doing the same thing on the, the education front. I think that we need to take into a lot of, a lot of things into consideration. Our, our students' safety is, is number one, our, our teacher's safety, our staff's safety, but also the cost of supplies. And, and what, what is actually going on in Sioux Falls at the time? It's hard because everything's kind of a case-by-case basis, week by week, day by day. We're always watching for numbers, but looking to those medical experts in our, in our community, looking to the school board, looking to our administrators, and then putting our students first as we work through those. Some of the biggest challenges is going to be room. We, right now, we have a six-foot social distancing, and to be able to fit over 20 students in a classroom, I'm, I'm positive that's going to be a challenge. Keeping kids washing their hands. We, as parents, we all know that this is a struggle, and getting them to wash their hands appropriately. Wearing masks appropriately. You walk around in, in Sioux Falls alone, you see people with their nose out of their mask or their mask around their chin, it's not doing much good there. And as a nurse, that is extremely frustrating. But definitely some challenges that we're going to have to identify and, and make policies and procedures that are going to be in the best interest of our students. So, thank you.
Cynthia? Thank you. I agree, you know, we're, how we are going to format that is questions. And we've already started talking about, you know, if we are allowed back in the buildings based on city, state, and federal guidelines, what, you know, are we going to have some go in the morning, some go in the afternoon, just split that out, and then have some take half the week, one week? And, you know, so those are all things we're already exploring and talking about and coming up with a plan. We have a leadership team that are handling that. But to me, the bigger issue is social, emotional learning. And we hear that a lot in our schools. And it's not only going to be for our students, it's going to be for our staff. And how do we meet them with those needs? Steve Hildebrand and I delivered books and notes to all the title schools. The book is called How to Fill Your Bucket, and it's about hope. And how can you, no matter what your circumstances are, use your best attribute to help others and, and provide hope? And those are the things we're going to have to focus on, in addition to providing them a quality education. We're also going to have to reassess, you know, it's usually called summer slide, I guess it's going to call, be called COVID slide this time, you know? What things were not kept over that time and they didn't make that. So how do we address that? And the other issues, I've already gone to the Department of Ed on this before, but do we need to reassess what our testing is? How we do that and do it at a different manner? And Sioux Falls School District is perfectly the test case for it, because we have the staff and ability to do that in a different manner. Thank you.
Good enough. The next question, if the district faces a funding shortfall due to COVID-19 pandemic, how would you balance the budget while retaining the high-quality education the Sioux Falls School District is known for? Cynthia?
Great question. So the issue will be this year, it's going to be quite interesting, because we were given a budget. We got a 2% increase in March from the governor. However, we've been told they're going to, originally it was going to be June, now it might be September. So it, it, what's going to be interesting is, there's so many other COVID funds, I'm going to first look at, if we are given a shortfall, is there other COVID relief funding that we would be eligible for to cap, recapture back into our budget based on what we're doing and how we're changing and all that, so that we can maintain our salaries and so forth? And be the premier school district, I believe, in the state? And while we're still the lowest in our two counties for taxes and the 11 surrounding communities, which is quite a feat to do, I think. But based on past board members' guidance on that. But if the budget shortfall comes forward, we have to just get into the details and pencil it through and work with, we have a very dedicated budget team wherein we, we start at the building level and move on up through, up to the IPC, and just sit down and where, and what we have to maybe change. You know, right now, funding for food is better because of the USDA has removed those guidelines, so maybe we have to shift some other things. And maybe we have to look at other funding again, like I've talked about with private funding. Thank you.
Sarah?
Definitely reassessing where everything is going right now, but there are a lot of funds out there. I completely agree, Cynthia. Utilizing staff in different ways is another, another thing. One thing that, where I grew up is, our school nurse was also our health teacher. Is that something that we can use? We can utilize staff in other, other fields? Is it something that, instead of EAs and subs, can we ask parents to volunteer more in the classroom? Can we, we, can we utilize things in different ways? And looking at where, where are those surpluses? Where are those things that aren't absolutely necessary for this next year that we, maybe we can put into the plans for the next year after that, once we rebounded from COVID? So I think assessing where everything's going, and then absolutely looking for those grants. And, and we have lots of amazing people that know how to write phenomenal grants in our, in our school district, and find money where you wouldn't even imagine that there was money available. So I definitely would use all those resources. Thank you.
Good. The next question is about workforce development. Workforce development continues to be an issue our business community faces. With the needs of employers continually changing, how will you work to ensure that our students are given the tools to exceed, to succeed in the modern workplace? What kind of community partnerships or activities could support student achievement during or outside of school? Sarah?
This is my passion for CTE, for sure. I'm a very hands-on teacher. I, I want to engage my students. And I, I taught with teachers that did the same thing that I worked with at CTE, but I've also seen it in my, my daughter's teachers, my son's teachers, that have engaged them in activities, real-world experiences. New Tech, our amazing, New Tech High, High School does this as well, where they do project-based learning, where they, where we can partner with, where are the, where are the industry needs? Healthcare is always going to be a big one. Welding is another one, electric, electricians, plumbing, all of those things, we need lots of people to go work in. How can we apply that in our algebra classes? How can we apply that in our math and our, our construction classes? How can we bring those industry partners in and create creative projects that not only engage our students in the, the content that they need to learn, but that they want to learn? And they want to come to class and they, and then they're also better prepared for when they graduate. Giving them those tools and helping them see the real-life value for everything they're learning. I used to hear it all the time, I don't know why I take this class, and I've heard it from my daughter and my son as well, this class has nothing to do with what I'm going to do in life. And then I would go online and be like, well, you need it for this job, or you need it for this career. Did you know that when you do this, that you're using this, this formula? And it's just very eye-opening that they're like, oh, this is real-life application. And I think helping students see that and help them on their path is important. So, thank you.
Do I, do I go?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So for workforce development, I think we need to start even earlier, and Sarah touched on that. And I have been a bit advocate of CTE in the middle schools. I, in fact, helped to pass last year when they were going to slash the EAs for CTE at the middle school. I helped to get that, so the funding came back in. In addition, we have a great partnership with Southeast Tech. The school board oversees them as well. And so we're, we need to make sure we're using that resource. Finally, I'd like to see a better transition, because maybe someone starts at Southeast Tech or a tech school and then wants to go on to college, but cost is prohibitive, or they need to get back and out in the workforce. The state has already started, but we are now even making stronger a program. Basically, you can get some credits in high school, you go to a tech school, get your associate's degree or your certificate. And then DSU is working with them so that they get those credits already on there. So those are the types of things I want to see, so that there's, they never think it's, they're at a finish line, that there's something even further to reach for. And because everybody has a different path, as Sarah said as well, but we want to make sure that they keep striving and reaching for education throughout their life. Thank you.
Either one of you can tell the audience what CTE stands for. I think some people in the community may have not gotten that message.
Career and Technical Education.
Okay. And what is the difference between that and the new school?
Jefferson?
No.
The New Tech High? Okay. So New Tech is 200 students, and it is project-based learning. They are on a block schedule. It's a very smaller school, and they also will combine curriculum. So you might be doing math and art in one class. It's, it's very interesting. And that currently is being housed at Southeast Tech, but will move into the new high school at Jefferson High School.
At Jefferson.
And, and then Career Tech is its own building, out in that same area, as I was talking about, but it's open to our school district, as well as we have seats from other school districts that purchase seats there. And they go out there in our bus to, or they can drive as well and take Career and Technical Education classes there.
Okay. That was on my message machine, just in case.
That's good.
Well, sometimes we do become...
In acronyms.
Well, and, and two similar concepts with two different names, you know, kind of thing. The next one starts with Cynthia. In the past few years, the state legislature has considered and ultimately defeated bills addressing pre-K education. What are your opinions on pre-K education? And if you are supportive, how do, how would you work with our state legislature, like, I'm sorry, how would you work with our state legislators to find a solution? And I'm assuming that also the Early Childhood Education Council is included in this.
So that's, preschool education, I think, is amazing. And I was lucky enough that I had the means to provide that for my sons before they went to school, because it's not only the educational, it's the socialization skills they learn. And so we, at the district, currently have Head Start. That funding has dwindled over the years. And we also have our own paid preschool as well. And we started junior kindergarten, which is kind of a nice way for students who maybe didn't have the preschool, they can, if they fit in that age window to me, and they're not quite ready for kindergarten. I call it red-shirting. I did it with my son. But not at public school, because we didn't have that option, but he was his summer birthday, because I just didn't think he was quite, quite ready. As far as working with the early childhood and with the state, I think it's critical to get the key players. I think there's some misinformation on whether or not it's valuable. That's been the, the problem in why the state legislature has not funded it. But we have to make sure that they're not cutting that piece of the pie out of the K-12 budget. And it, so it needs to be a separate revenue source. So that's always the big question. Where is the extra money going to come from? So that's what we have to show, that the value of it and what it's going to do over time for the state and other sources of help, maybe lower Department of Self-Physical Services and prison services by providing this service. Thank you.
Sarah?
I agree, wholeheartedly. Pre-K is, is so important. My kids have all been in a preschool program. And, and not just the social, socialization, but even the just knowing how to wait your, your, your turn and just structure, and how to sit in a class, and how to raise your hand, just those, those things, just to prepare them for kindergarten. So kindergarten isn't such a, oh my goodness. We also have many parents that, that work two jobs, and they're not able to sit at home and, and teach all of the things that pre-K is able to help out with. It's just a big, huge support for getting those kids involved and passionate about learning. I agree so much with how we need to, that passion for learning should never stop. And if we can engage them when they're three and four in activities where they're learning every day, where they, they have a love of coming to school. I've worked, I, one of the courses I helped teach in at USD Nursing is Community Health. And so I do spend a lot of time with Rita and the Head Start program here at this, in the Sioux Falls School District. And that program is phenomenal. You see those kids and they just beam when they see their teachers. They come running in. If there's been a break, that's their, their stability. It's their, they eat family meals, just learning their manners is all such a huge part of what pre-K offers. And I definitely agree, funding is going to be a big problem, but we can find it. There are so many things out there that we can find. And we're very creative. We have lots of creative ways to, to come up with things. So, thank you.
Sarah, this is your, your time to be first. With two new schools on the horizon, hiring teachers will likely be a top priority in the coming years. What will you do to help attract highly qualified teachers to our school district?
I was ready for this one. I, I don't think people promote the positives of teaching enough. You always hear, oh, they don't make enough. Well, I came from being a full-time registered nurse, and I made more as a teacher, working in the Sioux Falls School District, than I did as a nurse working full-time. So putting that into, putting that into perspective, the pay isn't as bad as, as, it, it's not high, but there's so many more benefits. The, the joy of your students every day, the insurance package was phenomenal. Summers off, June, July, and August, holidays. My first Christmas ever spending with my kids was the, the winter that I spent teaching. There are just so many benefits. You have, you have that, that constant schedule, that seven to three, but every day you get to touch a life. Every day, and it's not just one life, it's a roomful of lives. And at the end of the school year, compared to the, the first day, you get to see that growth. And it is absolutely unbelievable. And I think that we need to promote more of that, that relationship, the team that you get to work with as a teacher. At CTE, I, I worked with some of the best teachers. At USD, I still work with some amazing teachers. And it's just absolutely wonderful, that, that team-based approach as well. So I think we need to promote more of the positives, and I think we'll bring a lot more people in. Thank you.
What will you do, this is the part of the question I think you didn't answer. What will you do to help attract highly qualified teachers to our school district? So this would be people that would be new to the district.
I think we need to grow our own. And I know that at some of the high schools, and I know that at CTE, we had a program as well, but I believe Lincoln has a program now for high school students that are interested in becoming teachers. So we're starting to grow our own, and I think that is probably one of the best things that we could ever do, is to grow them and encourage them, and then model the way for them, so that they come back and, and teach for us.
Cynthia?
Attracting and retaining our teachers, and all of our staff is frankly a priority, because we know, all know that with turnover, there's additional costs and time loss and so forth. Environment is even more important than pay. How do we make sure they are in a good, safe, happy environment? And so making sure we're doing surveys and reaching out to them and making sure those issues are addressed, that's very important. We're in fact changing our surveys with them so that we're making sure that those things are taken care of. Money. We, right now, are currently lower than like Harrisburg for our starting salary, so it's, how do we maybe change our scheduling or make, we, in five years, we surpass them? So sometimes it's... So, sometimes it's educating the younger teachers. By the way, if you stay here, you're going to be already over that. We have surpassed Harrisburg and our benefits are better. Sometimes when they're younger and they're still on their parents' insurance or on a spouse's insurance or something, that doesn't catch up to them until later. So, making sure we're educating them through our HR and so forth, that they're having that. And the rewards of what teaching is and what they do and provide for somebody's life. It's, it's such a wonderful, what do I say, wonderful profession. That's the word that was escaping me. They have the ability every day to help someone and making sure we as a district are the best out there so we get the best teachers. That's always been my goal and making sure we're meeting with them and making sure their issues are resolved. Thank you.
Good to know. The next question, we'll, we'll start with Sarah. Before COVID, how many buildings have you visited? Do you need superintendent's permission to visit?
Before COVID? I had visited a bunch of buildings as a member of working at CTE because we went out and visited a bunch, well, the high schooler, high schools, and then we brought the middle schoolers out to CTE for days. And so, I interacted with them through that as well. And then I hosted a summer camp at CTE too, so I brought in middle school kids that way. But as for being in buildings, my daughter was in every sport that she could possibly be in at Edison. And so, I, I got to be in all of the, the middle school buildings that way. My kids both went to JFK Elementary, so was able to be in that building as well. Haven't been in all of the other, I was in Robert Frost and then been in Garfield as those were both challenge center sites when my daughter was in challenge center. So, I've been in those as well. And then I've been in some of the, like Hawthorne and some of the Head Start programs as well, Pettigrew, through teaching, through USD Nursing. So, I've been in those buildings for that reason. I would love to set up days to go in and, and spend days. I, I absolutely love learning from other teachers. I love learning from kids and I, I would, would love to spend some days inside of there. So, hopefully, once COVID lets up, I'll be able to do that again. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Good question. I've been in everyone. It's probably an unfair question, I'm an incumbent. So, but prior to meet my election, my first time, I tried to meet with almost every, or email every building principal and then also with additional staff to kind of get what their thoughts were, what they saw that could be done better, what other issues they saw, just to also help myself hit the ground running if I was elected, as well as that they now had a direct contact they could reach out to going forward. Since serving, I'm still very actively going to a lot of the buildings. As I said before, I'm a mentor at Hawthorne and I'm volunteering, I was volunteering weekly at the EIC. I've had sons at all levels, so you know, that helped me go elementary, middle school, and high school. Very involved in those schools. I was treasurer of the Booster Club, which at high school is a really big job at a high school position. I was treasurer, the treasurer and other officers at Robert Frost, PTA, then PTO, and same at Patrick Henry Middle School. But it was good for me, what I wanted to do when I was first elected was reach out to the schools. I didn't already have that footprint in and reach out to them, especially being the title schools that I, I wanted to make those communications with and the other high schools that my sons had not attended and meeting with those principals. It was a great experience and it was fun to just kind of see all these different buildings and how each one operates. You know, they're really their own entity and kingdom and that principal has that ability with, with following in the guidelines of the district, but you can see the different ways things are done that way. Thank you.
Good enough. We'll start, we'll start with you again. What do you plan to do to orient the new superintendent or what would you do to orient the new superintendent with the community? What could the community help you with for her orientation?
That's great. Dr. Stavon is just an amazing person and she's already started doing this on her own. So, I've been working with Andrew Grady, who is the executive assistant to Dr. Maher, who's, will be helping Dr. Stavon in making those virtual introductions. So, like with the governor's office, with community leaders in Sioux Falls, with, she's done it internally with administration and staff within the district, but I'm doing more, I would say, the outside. And so, it's just making sure when she gets here and starts July 1st, she already has, you know, that they have a face and a connection already so that she can start reaching out to them. She, one of the things I was most impressed with when she interviewed, I met, I spoke virtually with one of her current board members and she, he said he was amazed how quickly she already knew everybody and had the connections and had that community. She's very community-minded and that's very important. We are the third-largest employer in Sioux Falls. We have a large budget. We're the largest school district in the state. It's important, her presence and the ability for people to feel that they can reach out to her or the district is immediate. So, that, that's what we've been working on. Thank you.
Sarah?
I think, well, I would be orienting to the, the position as well, but I think going out and meeting, going to all the schools and introducing, it would be both of us to, to all of the staff, administration, students. And then for the community, I, you know, I'm really learning remote, Zoom is phenomenal. You can, you can reach through webinars, you can reach out to a lot of people. We have tele, even tonight, being able to, to talk like this and getting, and getting that community feedback, allowing people to ask questions, getting to know. But the only way, the only way to truly orient anybody is to build that relationship. And so, a relationship goes both ways and, and, and I'm, I'm very excited to meet the new superintendent. I am very excited to, to get into this position and I think the best way to build that community relationship is getting out there and meeting people. So, thank you.
Let's end on a positive note. In your opinion, starting with Cynthia, in your opinion, what is our district's greatest strength?
Oh, I've said this over and over and, and a lot during the COVID issues is, it's our people. We, our biggest and best resource is our people and our, and we have the best. And it's continuing to lift them up and provide that. And we have great people because we have a great environment, we provide a great product. But, and their hearts are all in providing the best education for students, no matter what they need and always meeting their needs. Our, our ELL population and our IEP students alone would be probably about, you know, one of the top 10 school districts in the state. So, how do we provide these great resources while also providing resources for dyslexic students while always providing services for the honor students? So, how are we always going to do that? And I say, competition is good for us, you know, private schools, homeschools, other school districts. We live in an area where you can easily get to several other school districts. We have to provide the best quality so that we don't become a donut urban community and people start going who can and travel to outside our district or to private or to homeschool. So, having the best people and providing the best education. Thank you.
I heard the word donut?
Donut.
Donut.
Yeah. So, like, yeah, donut.
Sarah?
I would say our greatest strength is resilience. COVID has taught us how resilient we can be. We could have all just thrown in the towel and said, you know, we're closing school, we're going to close. But we saw teachers step out of their comfort zones and people that were not comfortable on computers became comfortable on computers. We had students that weren't comfortable learning in that environment and they took it upon themselves to be creative. And we have seen teachers come up with phenomenal things. I just saw one of the music videos that was put out by one of the, the music teachers where they had all the students send in little segment, segments of music and they put it together. It was, it was absolutely phenomenal. And we bounced back. We bounced back and we are better than we were before. And so, I think resilience is a huge part, even the school lunches. I mean, it brings tears to my eyes watching how many of our staff volunteered their time to go provide food to those who didn't have food. We found ways to connect with our community and we, and we remembered what we're here for. We're here for, just like Cynthia said, we're here for the people. Sioux Falls is an amazing community. We have a vast array of support from the community, but also from within. And resilience is, is definitely our key word this year. Thank you.
Good to know. That brings us to our closing comments and we will have three minutes and we may go over one minute, but we'll be pretty much on time. We'll start with Sarah and then go to Cynthia.
So, again, I just wanted to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for to, for providing tonight's activity, especially having to amend it to, to the new ways. But I also wanted to, to thank all of you that are viewing at home or maybe will be viewing this later on YouTube. I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and getting active and being a voice for our students. Why do I want to run? As I said before, I'm a mom. I'm an educator. Education is my passion and I'm here for our students. I know that every student doesn't learn the same way and I know that we have phenomenal teachers. We have teachers that should be mentors for other teachers and guidance and they raise the challenge, they flip their classrooms, they, they implement fun, engaging ways and their students want to learn. They crave learning and those are those people that I want to promote. I want to, I want to raise up those administrators that walk the talk and those teachers that walk the talk and our, the rest of our staff in our buildings, our custodians. I'm, one of our custodians at CTE, Matt, was one of the, the bright cheerful people that every student saw every morning and looked forward to. And I think every person within our Sioux Falls School District is so important and , and valuing, valuing them and making sure that they have a, an important role in everything that's, every decision that's made. And finally, I think one of my biggest reasons for education is, is that, like I said, not every student is on the same path, but every student should succeed and we should be there and we should help them to find that way, no matter which way it is, and, and support them and help them to rise to the challenge and raise that bar for every student because I think sometimes we let the bar drop and it's, just because they choose a different way doesn't mean that they're not going to be successful. And so, hopefully, helping to, to raise that and building those relationships with our students and then supporting our parents. Parents work really hard. Many of our parents in Sioux Falls work two jobs. Both parents work outside the home. How can we support them and still help their kids to be successful? And making sure that all students have equal opportunities, no matter which school they do go to and that they'll be challenged appropriately. So, thank you and I would very much appreciate your vote in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia, Michaelson?
Thank you. As an attorney and a grant writer over the years, I've learned to be an advocate and to problem solve. And I've always tried to bridge the gap as a board member between parents and other community members in the district because sometimes it can be overwhelming to navigate those waters. So, I will continue to do that for all of our parents and guardians and community members and taxpayers in our community. When you have questions about the district or if you want to question something I've done, I will be there for you. I have also served outside in other volunteer activities that have helped the district. I recently finished a campaign with the Volunteers of America for the Home Place Campaign for our homeless students in our district where they can go and live. And they originally had only 10 units. They built a new building of 21 units. We raised $3.5 million. So, I'm always looking for other ways to strengthen our district and our students. I thank you for taking the time to listen this evening. I've learned long ago, long ago, that those of you who show up are the ones that get things done and your involvement in tonight is a testament to that. I'm proud of the work we have done these past three years and I'm proud to work for you, this school district and our community. I commit to continuing to work hard so we can provide the best quality education at the best tech, tax cost. Some of the things I'm most proud of these past three years was the Promising Future Fund that I mentioned earlier, the passage of the bond at 85%, the remote resources to our students that we did during COVID-19, both food and educational resources, and we increased our graduation rates without lessening the quality of their education. And finally, the SIPs program. I look forward to continue to fighting for our students, our teachers, and our administrators. Again, thank you for listening tonight and I appreciate your vote on June 2nd or earlier by absentee. Thank you.
This concludes tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. We appreciate all of those of you who have watched from home. It is truly unusual to do this without an audience. We also want to thank our school board candidates for their participation and preparation for tonight's event. Please join me in giving them a round of applause. As we all know, the right to vote is an essential, an essential part of making our democracy function. We encourage everyone to exercise this right on Tuesday, June 2nd. On behalf of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce and the League of, the League of Women Voters, thank you and have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.